Good evening, everyone. This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 28th. It is 7:00 PM. We are located at 400 Boardman, Traverse City, Michigan. We will start the meeting. If you have a cellphone, please put it on vibrate or silent. It would be very much appreciated. And we will call this meeting to order. And the first item is the opening ceremonies. We will have the invocation by Commissioner Henshaw, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, with Commissioner Henshaw leading. Thank you. Rise.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, I pray that you'll give us gratitude in our hearts for this wonderful nation and community that we enjoy so much. We just pray for the elected officials who've been elected this month, and our local community, and in our nation. And just pray that you'll give wisdom and discernment to them, and just keep them that they may make choices that are for the best good of this country and this community. View this tonight as we conduct the business of our county, and give us wisdom and insight into the issues we discuss and vote on. In thy name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with the clerk, do the tenants' roll call, please.
Commissioner Gilman?
Here.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Lemko?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Thomas?
Yep.
Fleese?
Present.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Enman?
Here.
Commissioner Maxpower is excused.
Okay. Next item is the approval of the minutes for October 31st, 2012. Who, Commissioner Wheelack?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes as mailed.
Second? Moved by Commissioner Wheelack, seconded by Commissioner Henshaw, to approve the October 30th, 31st, 2012 regular board meeting minutes discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passed? All right. We have two public comments. This would be the first one coming up as our next item. We have one at the end of our agenda. And if there's a particular item that you wish to speak about, it is our protocol. You get our attention or the clerk's attention. If you wish to speak on a particular item, please let me know when that item comes up. So, under general, first public comment, the clerk will read the rules.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized, and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson.
Okay, you've heard the rules for public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time? Seeing no indication for a public comment, we will close the first public comment. We will move on to the approval of the agenda. I just have one item. We have a letter dated December 7th to the attention of fellow employees and public servants. I believe this was a letter generated by the Employee Recognition Committee and Commissioner Henshaw for an annual letter to the employees that we normally send out in December. So, they have put together a draft for us for consideration tonight. So, I would like to add that under either committee reports or new business. Be whatever pleasure the board has.
Motion to add it to new business.
Okay.
We don't need a motion.
Yep. So, I need a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
Do you want to add?
Do you have another item? Hand it out to.
Is that, the interim needs to be added as well?
Yep.
Okay, we'll put that as.
Administration.
You want to put that on Administrator's report?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. There will be aye. Appointment of interim equalization director. Okay, we have two add-ons. Now, we need a, yes, Commissioner Richardson.
Vote for approval with the as amended.
Okay, clerk? Yes. Moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Henshaw, to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of, under Administrator's report, aye, the appointment of the interim equalization director discussion, and under new business, a, letter to all Any other discussion on the agenda? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passed. We have an agenda. Special orders of business? We have none. We will move now to the consent calendar, and the clerk will read the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. Receive and file, number one, correspondence regarding Senate Bill 1020. Number two, correspondence dated November 15th to Scott Howard. Number three, resolution from Bay County regarding St. Clair River remediation. Number four, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency minutes dated August 16th. Number five, Northern Michigan Substance Abuse Services Incorporated minutes dated September 10th. Number six, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency minutes dated September 20th. Number seven, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority minutes dated September 26. Number eight, Department of Veterans Services minutes dated September 26. Number nine, Department of Human Services Board minutes dated September 28. Number 10, Central Dispatch Policy Board minutes dated October 11. Number 11, Board of Public Works minutes dated October 11. Number 12, L E P C minutes dated October 11. Number 13, L P T minutes dated October 11. Number 14, Special Board of Public Works minutes dated October 16. Number 15, Department of Veterans Services minutes dated October 18. Number 16, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health minutes dated October 18. Number 17, Special Board of Public Works Work Study Session Minutes dated October 22. Referrals, none. Approvals. The Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Number 18, Acceptance of Donation Veterans Affairs. Number 19, Sheriff's Office Surplus Items. Number 20, Dental Services Agreement Amendment Number 15. Number 21, Medical Directive Services Agreement with Benzine and Leland Renewal. Number 22, Animal Control Division Shelter Cleaning Agreement Renewal. Number 23, Grand Traverse Regional Healthcare Coalition Services Agreement Renewal. Number 24, Sheriff's Office Food Service Contract with Airmark. Number 25, Sheriff's Office Burn Justice Assistance Grant for TNT. The Resource Management Administration Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Number 26, Clean Sweep Grant Fiscal Year 2013. Number 27, Trash Removal Services Contract with American Waste. Number 28, Window Cleaning Services Contract with Fish Window Cleaning. Number 29, Vehicle Used in County Business Policy. Number 30, Request for Recruitment Assistance Traverse City Light and Power. Number 31, Appointment to the Board of Public Works Jay Zullinger, and the Ways and Means Committee did not meet in November.
Okay. You've heard the reading of the consent calendar, and just for members of the public and those watching, the consent calendar is a summation of what we have received and filed in terms of information sent to the county of relevance to the Commission, and also the preliminary recommendations from the Committee of the Whole as we have met through the month. And we did not meet at Ways and Means Committee due to a lack of agenda items, and those particular items are transferred over to Administrator's report for this meeting. So, with the reading of the consent calendar, does any member of the public wish to have any item pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, we will now move to the Board of Commissioners. Does any county commissioner wish to have any item pulled from the consent calendar for further discussion? Commissioner Thomas?
I don't want to pull, but if you would allow me, I'd like to make one quick comment about item number three.
All right, go ahead.
The people in Bay County are exactly right when they say that the reason why the Great Lakes is down from the dredging to allow larger ships to go through the St. Clair River. It's been happening for years and years and years. I noticed in the paper, they're blaming it on the drought and everything else, but the truth of the matter is, the water's going out through a bear hole than it used to, and the only way it's going to be corrected ever is by putting in a lock system like they have up on Lake Superior. That's it.
Okay. All right. Does any other commissioner have an item to pull from the consent calendar? Commissioner Lemko?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
All right, moved by Commissioner Lemko, seconded by Commissioner Fleese to approve the consent calendar as presented with no items pulled. Is, I think, a first.
First.
In 20 years, I think. Congratulations, Commissioner Lemko, Commissioner Fleese. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing on roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Henshaw?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Fleese?
Yes.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Gilman?
Yes.
Enman?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We now move on to items removed from the consent calendar, which there were none. We now move on to the Administrator's report, and Dave, you could just take those one by one.
Okay, the first item is the assessing contract with East Bay Township. As you know, we've had this township, or this agreement with the township for a while now, and Glenn Lyle is here, as well as our Deputy Equalization Director. Do you want to come up and talk about that?
And if you could, please introduce yourself to the audience and speak clearly into the microphone.
My name's Jim Baker, and I'm the Deputy Equalization Director.
And Glenn Lyle, East Bay Township Supervisor.
Okay, we have the, it is, Dave, is it my understanding that the contract is under the same terms and conditions as the present one?
Yes.
Is, and it's been renewed annually for several years now? I don't know if there's anything you wish to add to that?
Well, I guess I'd just like to say how well it has worked. East Bay is paying the full shot. I know at one time there was some concerns that we weren't getting charged enough. Excuse me, we are paying the full shot. It's worked well. I mean, we were doing intergovernmental workings together before it was the new buzzword. You know, there's more and more of this going on, and I know there's been some concern whether there's separation of duties and all of that. Our assessment role is probably superior, as far as I'm concerned, than anybody else's. I think ours is, from what we started with, where the state was ready to take it over to where we got, as far as I'm concerned, one of the best roles out there and most accurate. Every building has been measured, and it took a lot longer than we figured because we never understood how bad it really was. And I guess our board voted on the 19th 100% to go after another one-year renewal on the contract.
Okay. Did you have any remarks before we opened it up to the Commission?
Yes, I did. There is just a minor difference in the contracts, and I wanted to bring that up. It's the third paragraph in the agenda item. It will renew automatically. That would mean that you'd have to make a board action to terminate the agreement so we don't have to go through this every year. We did move the expiration date so that it coincided with the assessment calendar rather than the calendar, and I would like to say that I think that doing the assessing for a unit is a valuable asset to equalization. It will keep our heads into what assessors are facing, and I have created a clear division of the two branches since I've been here, and have not allowed any duties to cross that boundary. There are dedicated staff and resources to do both those avenues, and I think it sets Grand Traverse County in a good position if any other townships were to flounder, need our services, or heaven forbid, if the state mandated county assessing, we would have a leg up on that. So, I think it's a valuable asset.
Okay, I will now turn it over to, Dave, do you have any closing remarks before we take the Commission? Okay. Commissioner Gilman?
Just, and for me, it's continuity. It makes sense. It's been working. As an East Bay Township resident, I know it's been working. I've got a couple of properties there, and I see where it's working better than it has before. I'd make the motion to continue the contract.
So, your motion is to approve the contract?
To approve the contract as, even in its form.
Okay. Or is there a second? Okay. Moved by Commissioner Gilman, seconded by Commissioner Henshaw, to approve the assessment contract between East Bay Township and our assessment office discussion. Commissioner Wheelack, and then Commissioner Thomas?
Well, no one probably in the room will be surprised that I oppose this motion. Statutorily, assessing of the township is the responsibility of the township supervisor by statute. I believe that there is a checks and balances when the township does the assessing, either the supervisor himself or by contract, that assessment role is reviewed by the Equalization Department, and then if they cannot come to agreement with their citizens, then there's the Michigan Tax Tribunal. There's a checks and balances system. We shortcut that system by having the county do this. I just have always opposed it. I still believe that it is wrong that we do, and I will not support the motion, and I absolutely do not believe we should have any discussion about doing it without having to come before the board annually for review, along with the fact the contract, as it's in our package, says there, Richard Thomas is chairman of the County Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, well, change that.
So, I'm guessing that's probably incorrect, too, but I just fundamentally oppose the idea that the county do the equalization. It's a statutory responsibility of the townships. The township should be doing their assessing.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Well, as the only one of us sitting here that ever did any assessing, I'm just going to echo what I've always said, is I'm opposed to it. If the county wants to do all the assessing, that's fine, but to have the fox looking over the hen house, to me, doesn't work out. That's not equalization. Like I say, if we want to do all of it, that's fine. There are counties that all the assessing is done by the county. There are several of them up in the U.P., but it's part, to me, it isn't fair for the rest of the townships to have to try to come up with equalization numbers when you've got the Equalization Department doing it. I'm not saying that they don't do it fairly. I would never say that, but it's part of due process that was put there for a reason. You have your assessment at one level, your equalization level, and then the state equalization. It's all part of due process, and it's part of your appeals.
Commissioner Fleese?
I'm also opposed to it, and particularly where the third paragraph's added becomes an automatic. Unless a board member was really on his toes, he wouldn't even know that it was being renewed And if this were to be passed, I think that automatic renewal ought to be stricken, but I agree.
Would you agree if we struck that part of it?
No, because I agree with the two previous speakers.
Okay. Commissioner Lemko?
Yeah, I just want to make a second correction. Robert Vandermark should not be the signatory, it should be Jim Baker. And do you want that as intern, Equalization Director, or?
Intern would be, if we were going to do that this evening, yes. And we can make that change along with Commissioner Enman's change.
Right. Okay, just want to make sure those two signatures are changed on this contract.
Okay. I guess the only thing I had to contribute is that it's worked well. I like the separation of responsibilities that is structured in the office, and that's something that Dennis and I had, and I had talked about previously to having this come before the board again, is that if there was a way to separate the responsibilities within the department, then it would make it much easier, I think, for perhaps the Commission and the public to understand the separation of responsibilities. And that was a goal that he had prior to him leaving, so I'm pleased that that was set up, and it works, seems to work well. And my overall philosophy is, if the county can do something that makes sense to assist a local unit of government, then we should do it. I mean, that's been our protocol since I've been on the board for 20 years, and I don't see a reason why we should stop now, so I'm going to vote yes on it. Commissioner, and the second point is, I think what we would want to do is just inform the administration of some kind of notice to the Commission that when agreements come up for renewal, especially on an automatic basis that we're notified, at least in the Committee of the Whole, so we understand when these things come, when these things come up for renewal, even though there's an automatic renewal process.
Does that need to be a part of the motion?
I would like to have that as part of the motion, personally, but that's up to you.
I would, I think that'd be appropriate.
Right, so we would add as a friendly amendment that administration would notify the Commission prior to the renewal date? Okay. Would you agree to that?
Yeah, I agree. I just have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Henshaw.
I just wanted to say that, you know, initially, I was skeptical of this arrangement, but, you know, if you're talking to Bob Vandermark, our current Equalization Director, about the situation, and it is, you know, I had the same concerns that were voiced here a moment ago, and this is actually fairly common downstate. It's not unheard of, and, you know, when I came on this Commission, I was really, felt really strongly that just because we've always done something one way doesn't mean it has to be that way, and that's kind of what I feel about this. It's working. If it stops working, we can absolutely change it at any time, but for right now, I'm in favor of this.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Fleese?
No, if my memory, I'm just sitting here thinking, my memory serves me correctly. I believe it was our June meeting. We discussed this issue at length, and we voted to extend the contract to December 31st to give East Bay adequate time to get their own assessing department.
I'm not quite sure on that.
Why would we have extended it then?
I think it was to make a report back to the Commission, whether they were interested in extending it or not, because I remember going to an East Bay Township meeting, and I think Glenn, you had indicated that you, that you were looking at some other options within East Bay, and then you wanted that time scheduled to make a recommendation to your board and our board. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we had new board people, and I wanted to leave it up to whoever the new board is to set something, not old board members set something that new boards got to live with. You're talking old board meeting last June? And you were looking at?
No, the new board was elected the 20th.
Of November?
Well, they were elected before that. They got sworn in. November, well, November 3rd is when they were elected. They got sworn in on the 20th.
If this is such a sure potato, in your opinion, why would you worry five months ahead of time about a new board? And how would you have known at that time that there would be any changes on the board? I guess I'm not following what you're asking.
I think.
If this was such a what, sure thing.
My understanding, Commissioner Fleese, was that he internally wanted to evaluate whether they wanted to take on their own assessment, contract out without county assistance or stay with the county, and he wanted that evaluation time that he could bring to his board, and then bring a final evaluation back and a recommendation to this board, whether he wanted Grand Traverse to renew the contract or not. So, that was the time period between what you indicate and now, was his evaluation time to do that, and then address it to his board and then come to us, so.
Well, you know, that's not what he said, and I would almost like to see the minutes from that meeting because unless I'm really getting senile, I don't recall that at all.
Okay, all right. All right, is there any other discussion before we vote on this? So, we have a friendly amendment to the motion that staff is to notify the Commission when this contract and the other contracts are up for renewal, if they have an automatic clause on it. Okay. Commissioner Wheelack?
Just to reiterate, the statutory responsibility to assessment East Bay Township lies with Mr. Lyle.
Okay. Commissioner Gilman?
Well, just to answer that, certainly, it does, but one of the methods he has sought is cooperation with the county in this regard, so he's fulfilling his responsibility, I think, in that way.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the contract as presented with the addition that administration will notify the board when it becomes renewable, before, prior to it becomes renewable. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lemko?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Fleese?
No.
Wheelack?
How.
Gilman?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Enman?
Yes. Motion passes with three names.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Moving on to the General Fund, October 31st Trial Balance.
We have our October 31st Trial Balance that starts on page 6, under that section. The very strong cash balances and revenues at that point in time primarily because of the tax revenues that are coming in. If you look at the revenue analysis, which is right after the trial balance, this is a comparison with the prior year. These are, if there are variances in the far right-hand column, they're not necessarily budget variances. It's a variance compared with the prior year, and you'll see there's a good increase in our tax revenue over where we were last year, and if you recall, last month, we were actually tracking considerably behind what we had collected, so tax revenues are coming in very, very strong. The, and the copper ridge payment, as Dave reminded me, was in that total as well. The charges for services is the next category of revenue line items that I want to draw your attention to. We are ahead of last year's revenue collection, and that's despite the fact that our district court revenues are down significantly, and that's offset by the registered deeds revenues. Real estate transactions are, they have been very active this year, and those revenues are offsetting the lower district court revenues, as well as some soil erosion activity and circuit court revenues that are ahead of budget in the prior year. The transfers in is the last item on this page I want to make a comment on. That variance is largely due to the fact that we budgeted $319,000 less for transfers in this year. Last year, we were increasing, using the tax revolving funds to cover or make, to make an advance payment to the Capital Improvement Fund to cover the last payment on our 2008 road bonds that are, will be paid off next year. Then, if we can jump to the expenditure analysis, pointing out significant variances here in general government, they're all primarily related to personnel costs, and I've explained those in the note below. And then the transfers out, the big variance with the prior year is strictly due to timing. It's not a budget variance. I have not, as of October 31st this year, I had not made the fourth quarter appropriations. They were made in the month of November. So, with that, unless there are any questions.
Commissioner Wheelack?
Dean, the only question I had, when I read this, we see the facilities personnel budgets down $300,000, basically. Have we done any evaluation of how that compares with the contract because of the contracted janitorial service?
Well, the contract for the janitorial service is accounted for in the facilities management fund, so it's not within the general fund. The general fund does appropriate the main revenue back to that fund or appropriation.
I was just trying to figure if here at the end of the year, we'd be able to see some sort of evaluation if, in fact, we did, and to see the savings. some sort of evaluation, if in fact we did, and to see the savings for the county that we had anticipated, for some reason whatsoever.
Well, we will definitely, you know, we should do that. Just to remind everyone, those savings in the first year would be offset by some unemployment costs that are coming in. We won't pay that bill until January, but we will book that cost against the 2012 activity.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, because that's information only. Moving on to the childcare fund?
Yes, that's the next item, and good news are the positive trends that we've seen here are continuing. No issues with the state-approved budget, and we are well within the county-approved budget. And the reason I wanted to present this, it's been a couple of months since I've given you an update on the childcare fund, but part of this variance that's favorable, I'm using some of that in one of the budget adjustments that we'll discuss here briefly to cover the debt service on the health services building. So very, very good trends here that we've seen now. This is our second year. I'm hoping that those trends continue.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, moving on to the budget adjustments.
If I could take just a moment, on the first budget adjustment, or the first page, when we put the 2012 budget together, we did not budget for the full amount of debt service on the new health services building. We did make an interest payment on June 1st. The larger payment, which is interest and principal, is due on December 1st. The building authority has not made those payments yet, but the two adjustments here are covering the balance of the debt service that is needed to cover that payment back to the building authority. And one of the additional revenues that wasn't budgeted that we can use to cover that, our liquor tax is coming in at a greater amount. That's the first item that you see, the $139,000. Fifty percent of that has to go to our substance abuse prevention and treatment, and that's what the... So with that additional revenue, I'm using 50% of that to cover part of the debt service. And then the second adjustment underneath that covers the balance, and that's where the childcare fund comes in. We can reduce the appropriation to the childcare fund to make up the balance of the debt service on the new building. And that's what I would like to do. And then the other adjustments that follow are, just briefly, our contract for the managed healthcare in the jail, we're experiencing some higher costs primarily because of the cap that's in that contract. But this is all covered within funds that have been approved within the jail or the corrections budget, so it does not increase the overall budget. It's simply a line item transfer within that budget. And those are the three budget amendments that I thought I should discuss individually.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson, again, and Commissioner Wheelock?
Was there a reason that the debt service on the health building was not budgeted for this year?
The best reason that I can give, when we were putting the budget together, we did not know when we would actually issue the bonds. We should have built something into the budget for the debt service payment. It was, I hate to say it, but it was missed. We were anticipating, you know, we were looking at internal calls of a number of our bond issues. We also refunded the Hall of Justice, and when we discussed this with the board last November, we mentioned that we were looking at the savings that we would have on those other building authority debt issues to cover that debt service. But we did not know for sure when those... I think what we were anticipating was that we would only have an interest payment in 2012, but we were able to jump on that project fairly quickly because of the weather. The bonds were issued, and we had the proceeds in January, and, you know, we were just not anticipating that we'd have a full year's debt service.
That's the primary piece, is we didn't anticipate occupancy this early, but we had no winter last year, so we were way ahead of schedule.
But we should have anticipated that there would have been some debt service in 2012.
So how much money have we spent on debt service then?
The interest payment that was due on June 1st was a little over $51,000. The total debt service this year is $271,000 on the building.
So it's the 51 plus the money we're seeing here?
Correct. There's 100 and...
Two, 48 years.
69 and 109, 70, about 180,000 here total between these two budget adjustments to cover the balance. There was 71,000 approximately that we had realized in calling the Woodmere debt issue and from the refunding of the Hall of Justice bonds that were already budgeted for those debt payments that were transferred to the debt service for the new health services building.
Because, I mean, when I looked at this, you know, I was surprised to see that, well, that we were doing this budget adjustment and thinking like, well, why wouldn't it have been covered somewhere else? Is it safe to assume that the debt service isn't the budget for next year?
It is. The debt service for next year is 293,000, and that's in part covered by increased rent charges to our health department and our dental clinic that's in that facility.
Commissioner Richardson, you have a follow-up?
I'm just going to move for approval of the budget adjustments.
Support. All right, moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Wheelock to approve the budget adjustments as presented. Is there discussion? Seeing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Fleese?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Gilman?
Yes.
Hinchell?
Yes.
Limco?
Yes.
Inman?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on now to the 2013 employee benefits. You have the resource department, Dave Benda, you have in your administrators' section report, there's a memo that basically outlines the analysis that was done, and that their recommendation is just to maintain all the present relationships and that the funding mechanism is in the budget. But do you have anything else to add to the recommendation? I'll leave it up, you have the floor, and administrator Benda and Dean Bot have anything to add to this?
Nope.
All right, Commissioner Wheelock?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the recommendation of the HR department as far as contract for benefits agent and benefits offered to county employees for 2013.
Court.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Fleese to approve the 2013 employee benefit structure and memorandum in our board packet is their discussion. Commissioner Gilman?
Well, on the vision plan thing, I mean, it's significantly, it's significantly different. The Cadillac and VSP plan, from a savings standpoint, what does that represent as far as our total cost?
It's a really small amount of the total benefit cost for, when you look at health insurance, you know, the elephant. Dental insurance is, you know, a reasonable amount. Vision is really a tiny amount compared to, because our benefit is very limited.
The vision is covered under the health, except for the glasses.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, Jen, you want to respond to that?
Yeah. No, that's correct. The vision is, this is just broken out from the health, I just highlighted what the vision cost is, but it's under our health insurance, you show your health insurance card. But our main concern was that it was a brand-new plan, there's no one else in this plan, we would be the first people doing the plan, we would be the guinea pigs with the plan, and...
But they're facilitating our other insurance anyhow.
They are not the carrier.
They're not the agent.
They're our agent.
They're our agent.
They're not a carrier, they're not Blue Cross or anything like that, nor have they been at any time.
They're crossing the agent-insurer line.
Correct.
Going from agent to actually being the insurer. This is a weird...
Basically, what they're trying to do is create a self-insured pool, and figure they're going to make money doing it.
What kind of card would we be getting for that piece of the coverage? You have the Blue Cross card.
For health insurance and dental.
And dental.
It's the same card, and then your, or excuse me, health and vision are the same card.
Okay.
Your dental is a different card.
Okay.
Vision write-downs with Blue Cross.
Mm-hmm.
And it's pretty thin. I mean, it's the exam.
It's only the exam.
Yeah, that's it. We're self-insuring the glasses.
Okay, but getting back to this, I mean, what, it's, so it's less than half. I mean, you know, I mean, the cost, I guess. You know, it's one of those things where it's like, you know...
Is it less benefits?
Is it less benefits? Are they promising less benefits, or are they saying that they're going to give the same benefits?
The network has not been tested, so we do not know any of the providers. So any of the vision providers in the area, we could not have any, I mean, right now our employees are able to go get, have a vision exam. Right now, with this new network, the...
I'm assuming as an agent of the Blue Cross Blue Shield, they understand what the network is that Blue Cross is there. Are they representing themselves as offering the same coverage?
It's the same dollar copay, but it's not the same provider network. They're not connected with Blue Cross to provide, they're using their own provider network.
Okay, but are they offering a similar, I mean, are they selling it to you, are they saying, hey, look, ours is just as good? Are they saying that? You know, I mean, basically, are they saying, we're offering apples for apples insurance?
No, I don't think they were saying that. I think they're starting, they're trying to start their own little vision insurance sub-insurance company. And it's our agent that's trying to start this insurance company, using us as the guinea pig, so they can get the providers on board to do it. We weren't really comfortable with that. We said, well, get your network developed and then come back to us. But right now, we're not really interested in being your guinea pig. That's pretty much what we told them at the table when we talked about this. The pricing was certainly attractive, but it really wasn't...
Half is good.
Yeah, half is great. But when you're paying, the total extent of the coverage is $15 for one exam for each year. It's, you know, it's a small amount of money to begin with, and they were basically trying to use, because ours is such a small benefit, they really thought that we could help them start, launch their new business, which is not an agent's business, it's an insurer's business. So we kind of shook our heads like I'm seeing other people around the table going, yeah, this doesn't sound good to us.
So our recommendation is to stay with the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan coverage for vision piece, and so when you go to your ophthalmologist or whatever, you give them your Blue Cross card, no, you give your health card, you wouldn't be getting, they wouldn't be getting anything else.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I need to know. All right, Commissioner Limco?
Are we going to be getting an update as to the savings that we implemented last year, when we decided to do the $5,000 deductible and how well that's working? When do we think we're going to be able to get that report?
I would say within the first part of next year, where still the claims are coming in through the end of the year. And then you're going to have a little carryover into 2013 from claims from 2012 as well. So I guess I would look to the finance individuals, but I would say first quarter of next year, maybe?
Yes, that's correct. And Commissioner Richardson had asked earlier in the year, and believe me, I have been tracking those costs monthly. We're really, you know, when you start something like this, you don't see a lot of activity in the first month. And I'm just now seeing some of those claims in terms of the volume or the checks that we're processing, some reduction. We talked to Cadillac Insurance when we met with them, because that was a concern, when they would cut this off or how long those claims might lag. But we're, I'm anticipating that I'll know for sure when we close the books for 2012, but that will not be until January 31st. I'm trying to capture as much of that activity as I can. Right now, the last time I looked at it, we have budgeted sufficient funds in all of the line items that cover the health. We weren't recovering enough through payroll, but we still have, in the budget, we had built the $700,000 savings. It's going to be awful close. Early on, it didn't look like we were going to hit that savings, but we're seeing some signs that we could actually hit that $700,000 savings. But it all depends on the cutoff and, you know, I will give you an update in January, most likely, but even at that point, we will not have final numbers.
All right. Any other...
They've got the carryover.
Well, we'll cut it off at some point.
Still have claims that are still coming in.
All right, any other questions on the motion on the floor? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the 2013 employee benefits as presented. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yep.
Fleese?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Gilman?
Yeah.
Hinchell?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Limco?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Inman?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to vehicle purchase requests.
Yeah, let me start. We have the undersheriff and the sheriff here, but I'm sure the undersheriff is going to cover most of this. Both the sheriff and the undersheriff have been working with Dave and myself to consider, or to have the board consider a vehicle purchase at this point in time. And my cover to you, we're explaining what we're trying to do here, purchase a Chevrolet Tahoe, and what they have done is identify line items that have been within the approved budget where they have not expended some funds, in the hope that you might consider a vehicle purchase. We've looked at the inventory, the cover letter from the undersheriff to Dave clearly explains the need to replace vehicles. And, you know, I think Dave and I are, well, I know we're in support of this, and I think Nate can explain the need regarding the one vehicle that we're asking for your consideration right now, so I'll turn it over to the undersheriff.
Undersheriff, you can introduce yourself to the folks at home, the audience.
Yeah, I can do that. Nate Elger, undersheriff for the sheriff's office. Back in May, beginning of this budget process, the captain of the law enforcement division, as they do every year, identifies a certain number of vehicles that are needing to be replaced, not simply by age of vehicle, but maybe because the vehicle has certain problems that have cost more money than should have. And two of the vehicles that we're looking at replacing and are going to replace regardless of what happens this evening, is we are going to be replacing two of our K-9 vehicles. Through the budget process, the board commissioners approved a certain amount of money for the purchase of vehicles, and if we purchase two vehicles that we want to purchase for K-9, that is going to significantly diminish the number of vehicles and perhaps the variety of vehicles that we can purchase with the money budgeted for 2013. So what we did was identified funds in the existing 2012 budget. We know how much the Chevy Tahoe is. We bid one of those out this year and replaced a K-9 vehicle this year with a new Chevy Tahoe. It's a very good vehicle. We have two additional Ford Expeditions, both of which have cost over $7,000 in 2011. So $14,000 in cost have gone out to these two expeditions, one's in '05 and one's in '07. Those two are going to be replaced by Chevy Tahos. If we can use 2012 funds to purchase one of the Tahos now, which is available, we can have it in three weeks, we would like to do that and spare that cash budgeted for 2013 for the purchase of additional vehicles, one of which will be a Tahoe.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Wheelock?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to authorize the sheriff's department to purchase a 2012, I'm assuming it's a 2012 Tahoe.
It is.
2012 Chevy Tahoe for use in the K-9 division.
Okay, is there a second? All right, moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Fleese to approve the vehicle purchase request by the undersheriff, Nate Elger. Discussion, Commissioner Wheelock, and then Gilman.
Nate, a couple of things. One, do we have, is this a local dealer, or is this coming out of downstate?
It's coming out of Grand Rapids, it's a Berger Chevrolet. It's actually...
We've bought them before, so...
Yes.
And the second thing, at one point, when we talked earlier in the year about some of the issues with the expeditions, there was discussion about possibly moving them to Marine Division or something like that. Is that still kind of the plan?
That is the plan. Once those vehicles are cycled out, they're four-wheel-drive vehicles, those vehicles are perfect tow vehicles, and fleet vehicles for winter use. are perfect tow vehicles and fleet vehicles for winter use.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gilman?
A question for Dave, I guess. Is, was there any expectation of, uh, return of these funds built into our budget or into projections going forward? I mean, was there anything that we thought was coming back into, uh, back into play for general, general fund use?
Well, we, uh, we certainly don't want to use, and I, I would not support use of salary or fringe benefit savings as a result of turnover or any of that stuff, because that's where the, that's where a substantial amount of the budget money is. Uh, and that is what, when you put fund balances as, as an offset in your budget, that's where you're going to get that money to offset that on the expense side.
Right.
Uh, this was money that was in the sheriff's budget that were non-personnel accounts, and I, you know.
What, which accounts were these coming from?
They're commodity lines mostly.
And some contractual services. They were primarily in, uh, commodity type, uh, uniform maintenance, supplies.
All across the bunch of.
Oh, yeah. You at least answered what I was looking for, is because I know that you're counting on.
That's right.
Not full employment next year. So we build this in and then all of a sudden, the departments think they have a bunch of money left over.
Right, and all that only, it only works if you don't take it out and spend it on something else, right.
Okay, uh, any other, Commissioner Henchel?
Nate, usually when we get vehicle requests like this, we usually get a sheet that shows the bidding process and who bid what. Was that done?
No. Uh, this, we, this Berger Chevrolet received the bid earlier this year. This amount, uh, the cost for this vehicle is about $300 less than that bid price. It's $29,977, and we did not have time to go through the bidding process, but Berger Chevrolet was awarded the bid previously, uh, for their vehicles, for the Tahoe specifically.
So basically reusing the bid we had earlier this year?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move forward with the purchase request as presented by Nate Elger. Roll call vote, please, it's not money.
Commissioner Fleese?
Yes.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Gilman?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Lumco?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Enman?
Yep. Motion passes. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
All right. That takes us to MSU Annual Work Plan 2013.
Yeah, this is, um, uh, something that, we didn't know whether we should bring it to the, uh, board or not, because it was actually approved, it's a five-year agreement with MSU, and this is, um, this would be the second year of the agreement, and, uh, they have to submit an annual work plan to us, they submitted it to us, and we, you know, Chris asked me what we should do with it, and I said, when in doubt, just send it to the board. So we, looking for your approval on their work plan.
All right, Commissioner Wheelack?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the annual contract with MSU extension in an amount of $84,596.
Is there a second? Okay, moved by Commissioner Wheelack, seconded by Commissioner Fleese. Is that correct? Are you the second?
I can, yes.
Okay, all right. Discussion, Commissioner Lumco.
Yeah, I'm questioning the dates on this.
Okay.
If this is a renewal, it should not be agreement starting at January 1st, or, or is it January 1st of '12? Because we started it last year at this time?
Yeah, it was started last year. You approved it last year. And this is the work plan for 2013.
Okay.
As part of that five-year plan.
Let's just want to clarify.
Commissioner Wheelack?
You know, I guess my only point about this is somewhere between this $84,000 that we have approved for the five years and the numbers that we have in our 2013 budget for MSU extension, I still believe we need to sit down with MSU extension and find out exactly where we go from, I don't remember now what it is, 236, you know, how do we go from $84,596, which we approved for a five-year thing, to a, I believe, a 2013 budget for MSU extension in an amount of like $236,000? So, you know, I, I really want to have a real discussion with them about how we get from the $84,000 we committed to for five years, or $86,000, $5,000, whatever it is, to $230,000. What's, what's in between here?
It's, it's.
It's a significant dollar amount difference.
Yeah, I, I think I recall that, but we'd have to get them back.
Yeah, we just, we just need to sit down and.
There was basic services.
There's been so much reorganization with the MSU extension in the last year and a half. I think, I think it's important that we bring them in and, and really talk about what we're getting for the difference.
But isn't that to support services? I mean, the people we employ that work in their office.
Right.
Rent, yeah.
Rent.
That's right.
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Lumco?
I think the $270,000 is the expenses, but then you, if you have to go in and look at what the income is, and Michigan State Extension is putting money into this program along with the money we're putting into it, and I think that's where.
I understand that, I'm just saying, if we look at the budget, we certainly need to have the discussion.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the, uh, annual work plan and the, um, cost of plan. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Gilman?
Yeah.
Henchel?
Yes.
Lumco?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Fleese?
Yes.
Enman?
Yes, motion passes. Move on to claim summary, you have that on your desk. Dean, uh, any comments on that?
Just briefly, the, these are the claims for November. There was one, uh, restitution payment to Roy's General Store, and that is separately listed at the bottom, so I need two approvals.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson?
Um, I move for approval of claims in the amount of $6,836,751.97.
Second?
All right, moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Henchel to approve the claims, uh, claims and accounts, um, in the amount of $6,836,751.97 for November 2012. Discussion, hearing none, roll call vote.
Gilman?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Lumco?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Fleese?
Yes.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Enman?
Yes, motion passes. We need a second motion.
Mr. Chairman, since we have managed to find money enough to pay the $6.9 million, I would move that we authorize the $4.16 to Roy's General Store, support.
All right, discussion?
It's the most ridiculous thing that's ever.
I know, I agree.
You're just lucky you're not married.
Costs more to process the check.
Yeah.
Unless you're willing to pick it up. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Just a donation would be helpful there.
You got to have Henchel Upstein.
Henchel?
Upstein.
Lumco?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Max Bauer? Oops, sorry. Fleese?
Yes.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Gilman?
I guess so.
Enman?
Yes, motion passes. Okay, does that conclude the administrators' report?
Nope.
Nope, we have the equalization director, I'm sorry, written in. Uh, Dave, go ahead and.
Yes, uh, Jen, you want to pop up with this one, or do you want to sit in the corner? Since this is her memo, um, we have, uh, received word that, um, our current equalization director, who's under a two-year contract with us, uh, is, um, on a leave of absence, and we're not sure whether he's going to be returning to work. It's very indefinite right now. As a result, uh, the board appoints the equalization director. It is not a administrator appointment, so, uh, it is necessary for you to do something about this. And, um, Jim Baker is our deputy director, was recently hired, he's a level four assessor, and, uh, could serve as the interim equalization director. We have other things that we wanted to tell you in this memo that we were planning to do, which is to, because the office is short-staffed, uh, and it's pretty crunch time for them, we would propose to move Jim Baker to the director, interim director position, move his dep, his senior assessor to the deputy director position, and allow them to hire a senior assessor. And that, you don't need to approve that, what we need for approval from the board is for the interim equalization director.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Jim Baker is inter, interim equalization director.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Lumco, seconded by Commissioner Henchel to approve the appointment of interim equalization director, uh, as recommended by, uh, Dave Bend and Jen Seaman. Discussion, Commissioner Henchel.
Jim, you want to do this, right?
Are you sure?
Commissioner Wheelack?
Thank you. Dave, do we have any, I, obviously, from what I'm reading, we don't have any idea about a timeframe on this.
Well, no, we don't.
My, I guess my concern is if we, if we move interim, you know, interim director, move the deputy director, do we have funding in that department to take care of hiring another individual?
Yes, there will not be any additional funds for, uh, Mr. Vandermark. At the, after a certain point, he's, he's not on the payroll anymore, and, and he'll be covered by other sources.
Commissioner Gilman?
In fact, his other sources, one of the things, when we hired him on, part of the contract was that he had his own health insurance, so we don't have to worry about his interruption from that. I'd like to at least say something, uh, since I'm not going to be here if, you know, it's, if he were to, if he were to return, it's, it's unlikely that I or myself, I'd be here. I'd like to say, he's, he's done a fine job for us, he's served us well, and gotten us through, uh, you know, a pretty tough time and worked well with, with our townships. And I'd like to at least give some credit where credit is due for a job well done, and also the forethought to have, uh, Jim handy, you know, or at least in, in the position to be able to take the reins of the department. I think, uh, he's served the county well.
Well, I want to thank you for making those remarks, and I feel as deeply as you, and I'm sure everyone else thinks that in their head, so thank you for bringing that up, and, and that was an excellent remark regarding Bob. The question I guess I have for Dave is, since he has a contract, is there provision, is there a provision within the contract for a leave of absence, or, or are we still paying him based on a notice of either continuing him, his contract, or terminating his contract, I guess?
We, we won't know anything until we get back, until we get something from him.
Okay.
Officially.
All right.
Uh, and it's not something I'd rather, I'd rather not talk about that personnel matter out in public just now.
Fair enough. Okay, um, we have a motion on the floor for the, um, for the recommendation of the interim equalization director. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I had the chance to go in and, and, uh, had some concerns, you know, a client locally was, had some concerns about, uh, how they were treated, and, uh, she called them, and she was very well-treated in that office, and, uh, felt that they gave her some very good information, even though it may not help her to, but at least the people in the office did an excellent job, and I want to just let them know that thank you for what they've done and what they're doing.
Okay, thank you, good deal. Commissioner Lumco? All right, um, moving on to the unfinished business, we have none. Moving on to new business, we have an item, that is a letter that is on your desk that was added to the agenda to all employees and public services dated December 7th. And Commissioner Henchel, you'll have to help me with this, but I believe this was put together by you and your.
I wrote this Monday morning.
Oh, you wrote this Monday morning?
Yeah.
Was this given to the Employee Recognition Committee, or was this just initiative that you just?
Rec Committee asked me to do it again, because I did it last year.
Okay, all right, okay. Good. All right, cool.
I thought it was well-written.
I thought it was well-written, too. Commissioner Richardson?
I'd like to move for approval of the letter and have it sent out, and also to recognize Mr. Henchel and the, uh, Employee Recognition Committee for putting it together.
Support.
Yep, okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the letter as presented, and, um, I would like to, if possible, have all commissioners sign the letter, so we'll have, have the original here, so I'll just pass this along, sign it, and then everyone else can have an opportunity to sign before they leave the evening, and then we'll save it for Commissioner Max Bauer. Well, uh, she'll be back, she won't be back here in December, uh, until January.
She can fax her signature.
So we'll have to do an electronic signature for her. Okay, uh, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes. Yeah. I'll sign that now and get that going. Okay, we, um, have no other new business, so we will move on to the second public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time? And if you do, please raise your hand, uh, come to the, up to the microphone. You've got somewhere close to three, three to five minutes if you need, regarding any issue regarding the public, um, county business. Seeing none, we will close second public comment. We'll move on to county commissioner reports. Do we have any? Other than interviews tomorrow, for those that are on the interview committee for appointments.
Nine to 12, we have.
Nine to 12.
The second subgroup of commissioners doing.
And those on, that are on that act committee, you have the agenda, it's on, it's in your, on your box, in your box, or mailed to you, either one. Anyone else? Commissioner Henchel?
Just a minor, very minor note from the metro meeting. When we started to build this health building, the, our, our agent suggested we do LEED certification, and, uh, we, we didn't do that, and that was the right choice. Metro was built a, a new fire station, and they're having a few issues with that LEED certification and the significantly extra, uh, energy costs it costs to have a LEED-certified building, so, good choice.
Okay, any other commissioner committee reports? All right, we will move on to notices and announcements. The only thing I would just like to, um, remind the commission, it is, um, our protocol and kind of long-term tradition that we do recognize outgoing commissioners that are December board meeting, so if you can hopefully make a commitment to attend the December board meeting, if you cannot, please let me know, and then we will do that at a committee of the whole meeting.
Can we do that as a roast?
Yeah.
It might, it may end up being a roast.
Yeah.
But, um, so, you know, it's our protocol to give you some recognition, uh, and a plaque. I just wanted, didn't want to have you surprised about that, and you might want to have a, you know, a few remarks for the public in terms of your service on the board as an outgoing commissioner, and we do appreciate your service that you have done for this term. So we do acknowledge your, um, your, your, your term on the county commission, or terms, and, um, we do also do that for the elected officials that, um, are leaving the county